Commission meeting held on this Tuesday, the 26th of June 2018. It's 10 o'clock in attendance today to my right is Commissioner Scott Jenkins. To my left is Commissioner James Ebert and I'm Jim Harvey. Our invocation this morning has been, is, will be given by the Director of Public Safety for Weber County School District, Mr. Lane Finley. Our pledge of allegiance will be given by Bill Ross and I will have the thought of the day, we'll go to that point. Mr. Finley.
You're welcome. Up front on him, we thank thee that we can gather here today to discuss the business of this great county and we ask that thy blessing be upon our leaders and those in charge that they will make appropriate decisions that will best benefit the residents of this county. We ask that thou will, bless those that, as we approach Election Day here and the final results that there will be participation and that people understand the importance of getting out to vote and participating in local government. We thank thee for all our many blessings and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a couple of thoughts today that I'd like to share. One of them, because it is the primary, the day we vote to, for primary elections, one has to do with the election and the other one has to do with our pledge of allegiance. The first one having to do with our election, or excuse me, yes, yes, our election is this. It's a quote by Simon Sinek. Leadership is not about the next election, it's about the next generation. And I know that, as I've thought a lot, how will the decisions we make affect the grandchildren of my grandchildren? And that's, that's usually, that's on my mind frequently. But then actually, one time, quite some time ago, and I'm a little passionate, you'll hear when whoever stands up and says the pledge of allegiance, sometimes I rush it, on purpose. And there's a reason for that. Is, I think, over time, in the English language, we've inserted a couple of commas where in the, in the pledge of allegiance, the commas aren't there. Sylvia, you taught me this, reinforced this to me, actually the first one, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's not, I pledge allegiance to the flag, comma, wait, pause, hold on for a few minutes until we get to the rest of the sentence. It's, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Is that right Sylvia? And then it's also, the next one that's pointed out is, it's one nation under God. It's not one nation, comma, under God, it's one nation under God. And, I think about that, actually, I think about that every night if I'm home, because I can hear the Star Spangled Banner playing from Hill Air Force Base at my home. So the impact of what I've been taught by you Sylvia, or what I've been reminded of you, affects me frequently. And I just wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say that for a long time Sylvia, now I got it out. So when we assign the pledge of allegiance, if you'll remember, please don't insert commas where they don't exist. Don't take those liberties, that would be my, my, my ask of you. Okay, that's my thoughts of the day.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Last night I had an opportunity to spend the evening at Commissioner Harvey's home, out in his backyard as he's talking about. And right at nine o'clock, sure enough, you could hear from the base, the Star Spangled Banner. And I just thought, how amazing it would be to have that opportunity every night, to be reminded of what a great country and the men and women who serve, to hear that every night. It was actually, you know, pretty neat, to hear it come across that valley from the base. And so when you brought that up, it just kind of reminded me that, you know, at times in our lives, we get a little busy on things we think are important, that there are some, some founding principles of this country that we need to be reminded of on occasion. And sitting there at nine o'clock and listening to that, really brought that back to my mind. So, thank you for that thought.
You're welcome. I will point out that it's revelry, 7:30 every morning as well, so if you're not up and going, my gosh, you are there. All right, item, item number E are our consent items, and I'll read those for public record. Item number one is a request for approval of warrants 1477 to 1480 and 429325, 429604 in the amount of $872,325.22. Item two is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $19,427.60. Item three is a request for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on June 19th, 2018. Item four is a request for approval of the safety policy guidelines. Item five is a request for approval of a retirement agreement, by and between Weber County and Lewis Flowers. Item six is a request for approval of training agreements by and between Weber County and the following, Hunter Tomlinson, Brett Coleman, and Austin Reeve. Commissioners, are there any questions? None being heard. Ricky Hatch, will you please go over in detail some of those items?
You bet, and happy Election Day to everybody.
Happy.
We've received about 22,000 ballots, which is so far about a 30, 35% turnout, which is phenomenal for a primary election. So, that is great, and it's been very quiet today so far, which we like. We issued 10 purchase orders this week for $19,000, 51% of that amount, or $10,000, is, was for the golden spike, and that is to refill some concession supplies. We issued 284 checks this week for $872,000. A third of that amount, or $292,000, was a series of RAMP awards to about four different recipients. 10%, or $88,000, was for the jail, and that is primarily culinary and utilities. 9%, or $82,000, was housing payments made on, by the Weber Housing Authority, 80%, or $73,000 was for the library, and that went towards books, subscriptions, and materials. 5%, we had two items for 5%, or $47,000. One was for the Health Department, and that will get them a new switchboard and the contribution to the Ogden Civic Action Network. And the other one was for the Roads Department, that was for asphalt, asphalt signs and truck repairs.
After that explanation, any additional questions, Commissioners? None being heard, I'll entertain a motion for item number E.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All consent items pass. As read, thank you. Item number F, on our agenda, the next three items are presented by Ms. Stephanie Ebert. The first one is a request for approval of an interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and the Board of Education of Weber County School District for Law Enforcement Services. Ms. Ebert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Right, as he's-
Excuse me, hold on just a second. Am I the only one that thinks it's a good morning up here?
I already told her.
Okay, fine.
Good morning.
The first contract I have is with the Weber School District, and this is an agreement that has been in the works for a little over a year. We have had an agreement with the school district for our school resource officers, but there has been a few changes. And so we're excited to have this contract finally be presented before you today for your approval. The Sheriff's Office actually posts seven school resource officers in our junior highs and high schools throughout Weber County and our contract cities. And over the last couple of years, the school district has made a tremendous effort to increase the amount of funding that we receive for these school resource officers. So we feel that this is a good agreement.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? None being heard, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, recognized. Great. No more questions, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number two is a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Alcohol Monitoring Systems for 24/7 Software and System Agreement. Ms. Ebert?
So this is an agreement for a software system for a new program that will be started in the state of Utah as of next week. We have a start date targeted at July 1st. That is a program, a couple of years ago, Sheriff Thompson attended a presentation from the state of South Dakota Police Department, or State Police. And they are running a program, a 24/7 program, primarily for alcohol offenders for second time DUIs. And this program has been very successful in their state, as well as Montana and several other states are, are starting programs similar to this. What the program does is it requires the individual who's been convicted of an offense to come to the Sheriff's Office twice a day, once in the morning and once in the evening, and blow on a portable breath tester for alcohol. And they pay a couple of dollars every time they, they do this. And what this does for that individual is it allows him to keep his driver's license and avoid incarceration, so that he can maintain his employment in most cases. So this is a very favorable program for many people in these other states. And so the sheriff approached Representative Fawcett at the state and was able to, they were able to allocate some seed money for the program. And there have been many participants that have been involved in setting this program up. Judge Lambert has agreed to run the program as a pilot, and a couple of other Justice Court Judges such as Judge Trinstrom and the Ogden Justice Court Judges have jumped on board. We've worked with the Highway Patrol, the Driver's License Division, probation, the Prosecutor's Office, Defense Attorney's Offices, and so forth, to get this program going. So it's been quite an undertaking. And last year we went, we put out an RFP for some software to run the program, to keep track of the funds received and the test results on the individuals that are in the program. So this contract is actually the software part of the program. The initial fee for the program will come from that seed money from the state, and then we anticipate that the offenders with the money that they pay every time they come in to test, will pay for the program from here on out.
Perfect. Commissioners, questions? None being heard, okay.
Is there anybody in the state who doesn't approve of this? You went through all the agencies and different people who were in favor of it. Is there anybody opposing it?
Um, I, I know that there was some, a lot of details that had to be worked out through the, the Judges Council, and there had to be some legislative changes for keeping the driver's license. And as far as I know, most of the people think it's, it's a, a very good program. And as I mentioned, the first approximately six months is just going to be a pilot. There will only be a select number of courts that are participating. They also have the University of Utah on board that are going to run some studies on the effectiveness of the program. And so at the end of that pilot program, and the end of that study, they'll reevaluate and see if, if they determine it's working or not.
All right, thank you.
So we've had a lot of conversations in this commission about criminalizing a lot of behavior that maybe is antisocial and the net effect of that, which is a continual incarceration, creating more recidivism, creating a cycle where you can't get a job because you can't drive. And I give kudos to Sheriff Thompson for looking at alternative ways to not only enforce the law in a manner that helps have behavioral change, but understanding that these are people that have issues and problems. And so I think this is an amazing program. It will be for a select group within, you know, right now within the pilot program. But incarceration is not, and had, never has been a way to really have true behavioral change. And we have to look at other alternative methods and methodology to accomplish this, and I think this is a great program. So I'm just expressing my appreciation to Sheriff Thompson for looking, going out and finding, because we all know when he doesn't believe in something, he lets everyone know, and when he does, he lets everyone know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, if there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract by and between Weber County and Alcohol Monitoring Systems for 24/7 Software and System Agreement.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Ms. Ebert, the third is a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Summerall Law Firm, PLLC, for assistance in the negotiation of a per diem rate for housing US Marshals service inmates. Ms. Ebert.
Okay. So, we house US Marshals inmate for the federal government and are currently charging a rate of $65 a day. And that is an amount that we negotiated with the Marshals back in 2013. And they required that, that was the agreed amount for a period of five years. So here we are, 2018, and that contract allowed us to renegotiate a rate with the Marshall Service, to try and obtain a higher rate for housing their inmates. This current year, we've actually had an average of about 180 Marshall inmates, which is the largest number in the state of Utah, and actually fairly large across the nation. We have a really great agreement with the Marshals, and so we're hoping that we can increase our per diem rate, which will increase our revenue. There is a, a company, the Summerall Law Firm, had approached us, and they are very well-versed in the processes and how the negotiation system works with the Marshals. When I, when we went through this process about five years ago, it was a very cumbersome process. It actually took us about six months from start to finish to submit the information and renegotiate, go back and answer the Marshall's questions. And it was quite a process. The Summerall Law Firm, as I mentioned, they understand the rules, they understand what costs are allowable, and what costs that we can allocate for this per diem rate. They use a system that has the same algorithms as the Marshals use for determining what rate that we can charge. And they are anticipating that we could possibly get a rate of about $75 a day or higher. And as I mentioned, they're a professional group, they do this all the time, they have negotiated rates for over 75 counties throughout the nation. And so they're very well-versed in it, they figure that they can, from start to finish, negotiate a new rate for us in about three to four months, which is substantially better than what we could do, which means that we can start earning higher dollars quicker. And so we thought that it was an advantage to use this company to help us renegotiate a rate, because they have such a great relationship with the Marshall's Grant Officer in Washington, DC. So I'm presenting this agreement before you to ask for your approval for this agreement with the Summerall Group.
Great. Commissioners, questions? I have a couple. What do you think the ROI is in as much as this is counting, this is costing the county money? It is another contract, but it also would save us money. What's the ROI on this, you think?
Um, so with, with an estimated rate of even, well, about 100 inmates, like I mentioned, that would increase with the, the amount that the Summerall Group proposes, approximately $700, $700,000 a year, additional revenue, just for the inmates that we currently have. That would mean an increase of about $50,000 a month plus. So if we can renegotiate a contract a couple months sooner, then we'll be $50,000 ahead if we can, if we can use them and get the new rate within four months instead of the six that it took us last time.
I realize that you have some, you know, that's, you're supposing that that'd be the case, but I'm sure that they have a track record in, in other counties, other states that do this. They're a national firm, at least on the contract information that I've read, it seems to be that's the case. That's, yes.
So-
Commissioner Jenkins.
It's my experience that these agencies wear you down. I mean, when you say it takes six months to negotiate these, these contracts, I believe that. And in the end, you end up saying, okay, we'll take what you give us, because we're so sick and tired of you, we can't stand it. And so I actually am very favorable towards this, I think this is a wise move.
You think the federal government agency can wear you down?
I absolutely do.
Just as an example, it took me a month to get my password reset.
A month?
A month. Yes, sir.
Well, that's, I want you to know that I think the efficiency of the county government runs much smoother than it does on other levels, and I just want to make that a statement. Great, if there's no other questions, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. Recognized and seconded. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Ebert.
Thank you.
Next one is by Mr. Crockett. The next two are by Mr. Crockett. And by the way, by, just by, before we go to the next two, by point of information, this commission's decided to hold items number eight, nine, 10, 13, and 14 off the agenda. Again, item eight, nine, 10, 13, and 14 will be held on the agenda. Item four is a request for approval of an interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and the North Ogden City, allowing North Ogden City to become the land use and building permit authority for property located in unincorporated Weber County that is currently in the process of being annexed into the city, which is approximately 1750 north and 775 east. For information, parcel number 11-04-007. Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Commissioners. The city of North Ogden has reached out to our office for requests in helping to, entering into an interlocal agreement with the city involving a parcel at 1715 north and 775 east. The parcel owner has submitted an annexation petition with North Ogden City. It's within North Ogden City's annexation boundary declaration. What this interlocal agreement allows is for North Ogden City to process land use applications and building applications, building permit, uh, applications. It just helps speed up the process, it's similar to agreements that we've entered into before. I've spoken with both Sean Wilkinson and Rick Grover, and both are fine with this going forward.
Very good. Commissioners, I'll entertain any questions? None being recognized, then, is there a motion?
So moved.
To approve. Motion and seconded for item number four. Without any other questions, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Great, item number five. Mr. Crockett is a request for approval of an agreement by and between Weber County and Weber Human Services for snow removal services.
This is actually an item that is no longer necessary for the agenda. We originally put it on because we thought that some of the details hadn't been worked out, but upon further research, the matter's actually been taken care of.
Thank you for that clarification, we'll skip that, then, and go to item number six, which is a request for discussion and/or action of final approval. I'm going to speak into the mic. Request for discussion and/or action on final approval of Cameron Crossing Subdivision, formerly known as Blue Acres Subdivision Phase Four, with a request to create an escrow account of $89,042.28 for the remaining subdivision improvements. Mr. Felix Yeverino, welcome Felix.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners, and welcome to new Commissioner Scott, Scott Jenkins. So I'll just jump right in. This is a, this is an application for final approval of a standard subdivision, meaning one acre lots, it's a nine lot subdivision in western Weber area. And on April 10th, Western Weber Planning Commission unanimously approved Cameron Crossing Subdivision with a positive recommendation to the Weber County Commission. As part of the preliminary and final plat requirements, the approval procedure, the proposal is being forwarded to the county commission. And the planning commission recommends final approval of Cameron Crossing Subdivision, formerly known as Blue Acres Subdivision Phase Four, with the request to create an escrow account for the remaining subdivision improvements. Any, any further questions for me, or Mr. Hamblin is here in attendance as well?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Yeverino or Mr. Doug Hamblin, who's seated in the audience?
How many lots are in this?
Nine lots.
Yes. And there's one entrance off 2200, is that correct? Just a singular entrance?
Let's see here, let me look at the dedication real quick.
There's a road that runs adjacent to it, but I don't know if that's, if that's an actual road, or if this-
Oh, yes.
Runs along the canal at the back?
Yes.
It's almost like a big flag, and it's on your page, I can't see the page number.
So, so that, that access to the, that stub to the south of this subdivision is, is actually access to another subdivision by the name of Cameron Cove.
Great.
And the same, yeah.
So they'll, so we plan to have an egress and an ingress in there eventually?
Where we stubbed it?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any questions or concerns that have come up throughout this process from the community or from staff?
The, the most recent one that was addressed in the report was, was regarding stormwater runoff from the road, from the impervious surfaces of the road. And engineering actually went out to the site and visited with the neighbor and made sure that that was completely addressed. In fact, it, it will be, because the curb gutter and sidewalk, I mean, I'm sorry, curb and gutter and also storm drain that have been in place are, are taking care of all that.
No further questions from me, Chair? Thank you Commissioner. There are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the final for Cameron Crossing Subdivision. Request to include the escrow of $89,042.28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you, hearing a second, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, this is a long time coming, we're glad to see that moving forward. I can tell you that, just to reiterate, that we're, this is part of more growth in Weber County. I know that Scott Park budgeted our growth at 1.75%, which was conservative, and the state has just recognized that we've grown at just over 3.5%, more than double what's anticipated. So that's just more positive news in Weber County that we're doing, we're doing a few things right. I'll move on to item number seven, Mr. Bill Ross, which is a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County, Weber County and Post Brothers LLC to provide storage maintenance building and/or outdoor storage for equipment used by Weber County Property Management. Mr. Bill Ross.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is just a renewal of a, a contract, we leased the, we've leased the property for the last five years from Post Brothers LLC over off of 1912 Street, where we house all our equipment for property management, all our snow equipment, lawn mowing equipment, dump trucks, and there's also a shop there where we do our welding projects. But we've, our, our lease expired, we were, we just previously had a five-year lease with them, it's worked out really well. Pulse have been great to work with. So we just entered a new contract with them, it's, instead of a five, five-year long-term contract, it's a one-year contract. The, the rate did go up a little bit as prices have increased from five years ago, and so it went from, we were paying $1,400 a month, now the, the rent went up to $1,650 a month, $1,650 a month. But Pulse has been really great to work with, we entered a, a year contract just in case we ever decide to, to move our facilities and incorporate- facilities and incorporate maybe something with some of our other departments to help save the county some money, maybe long-term and, and also Post have entertained if they ever leave, they're, they're adjacent, their building's right adjacent to us and so they own all that property, but they're thinking about relocating and, and we entered a less long-term lease agreement with them as a possibility that we could possibly purchase that property if we desire in the future, so.
How many acres do they own?
I'm not sure exactly.
How large? It's-
Let me find my, my commissioner. What's the square footage of the storage?
The building?
That's a good question, I didn't-
I'm looking at the contract.
There's a, the, the storage facility is, the shop area has two small office areas up front and a break room and also a shop in the back where we do our welding and then there's also some covered awnings where we store all our equipment under. I would say it's probably about, I don't know, I'm trying to-
I was going to say about six, six, if I, I, I know the subdivision because the address is listed here, I was going to say about five, six thousand square feet.
That's, that's probably what I'd guess, so, yeah.
Sorry, it's okay. There's a dance that goes along with that.
Jenkins, he phoned a friend for the answer on that one.
Right.
Sorry about that.
Just also, you know, just imagine this, as we look forward to the, with the office space and things in regards to this property, when we start the demolition of the parking structure, property management offices will, will no longer be there and so our property management team will actually work out of this office in the upcoming future as we-
At least that's one of the plans.
Yeah, that's one of the plans.
Gives us an opportunity.
It does.
Very good. Commissioners, I don't have any more questions, I'm going to entertain questions, Mr. Jenkins?
So Sean, or Bill, I mean, I'm sorry. Bill, are there other pieces of property like this we lease, or is this the only one?
This is the only one of this, yeah, we own all the other properties that we function and run out of, but-
Okay, thank you. Point of clarification for Commissioner Jenkins, it's the only piece of property that we lease for property management, but I believe that Weber County has other properties we lease for the-
We actually do for the sheriff's office, yeah, there is one.
Is that correct?
Yes, we do, we actually, there's one down on Gibson Avenue that we lease for a storage facility for them as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Great, any other questions? None being recognized, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. We have a motion and a second for item number seven, there's no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Because we've held item eight, nine, ten, thirteen and fourteen, we'll now go on to item number eleven, Courtland Erickson, which is a request for approval of an amended settlement agreement with mutual release in second district case number one-seven-zero-nine-zero-six-one-eight-two, Uena Highlands Improvement District versus Weber County. Ericson, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Couple of weeks ago, I brought before you a settlement agreement, you'll recall it involved several different parties. Two of them were Wardell Brothers Construction and Jonathan Ford. Unbeknownst to us at the time, they negotiated a different amount that Mr. Ford was going to pay to Wardell Brothers for the work that Wardell Brothers was going to perform under that. They have changed the contract, proposed changing the settlement contract from an amount of seventy thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty cents to the new contract proposal where Mr. Ford will pay Wardell Brothers eighty-one thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety cents and I think they also changed or either added or deleted the page numbers on the contract, looks like they took them off. Other than that, there are no changes, so we would request that you authorize putting your signature on the new contract, settlement agreement.
Commissioners, any question for item number eleven?
No, this appeared to me just to be kind of a cleanup and just running it past the commission, there's no cost or substantial, substantial change to the contract affecting the county, is that correct?
Correct, nothing affects the county in any way.
Very good. Seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for item number eleven.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Mr. Grover, item number twelve, which is a request for approval of a resolution of the Weber County Commissioners at Weber County appointing a new member to the Weber County Board of Adjustments.
Good morning commissioners.
Rick Grover.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
The Board of, good morning. The Board of Adjustment looks at appeals and there's five members on this board, there's two that are appointed, we have one spot that is coming up, that expires on June thirtieth. All our Board of Adjustment members and Planning Commission members are all appointed by, you good man, and the only spot that we have here is Phil Hancock. We have sent out notices and we haven't received any other information back from other people interested except Phil. Phil has served on there for two terms, he's done a great job and so we're recommending that name before you, since he's the only one.
Thank you. Any questions about this appointment?
I don't have any.
I would just, I would just add that, I mean, this is fairly complicated, there are a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of law, there's a lot of case law, there's a lot of processes and it's not a shiny rock, so to speak, as far as one of the, to do this job and so if we have someone that's been invested, that shows up, has been part of the process, that continues to want to serve, I'm happy to, to make, to move them forward for sure.
With the other people who serve on many of our boards, they do so with, as a volunteer. I know Mr. Hancock to be reasonable with great experience and he has a good decision-making process.
Plus he's a master plumber.
He's a, he's a great man. Commissioners, are there any other questions or statements?
Motion to approve.
Second. I was just going to call for the motion, we have a motion in a second.
Resolution, sorry.
It's a resolution.
Twenty-five.
Resolution number twenty-five, we're good, unless there are more questions, Fatima, go ahead and call for that resolution.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
And Chair Harvey? Aye. Resolution twenty-five carries, thank you very much. Now is the time in our commission meeting, item number G, which is public comments, if you'd please, if you, if you have interest in coming to the, in giving some comments, please limit your comments to three minutes.
We're so pressed for time.
None, none being heard, commissioners, I just, I want to publicly tell you that I appreciate the fact that we're in a commission body of three that talks, communicates and gets along with one another and I think that's fantastic for me, wanting to know that it's appreciated by the chair very much, thank you both very much. I'll entertain a motion for item H.
So moved.
Adjourned.
I don't want to second that.
No, I will, second.
We stand adjourned, thank you.